We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you very much for joining us. We have more than usual and we welcome you to our meeting, so we're very excited.
I am.
Madam Secretary, will you please take role?
Yes, all members of the Board are present and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I would like to celebrate a birthday we have with us. Mrs. Oroio's birthday is today and she will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda, we have consent. May I get a motion to approve consent?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, Dr. Wall.
Thank you, Leila. Just want to give a timeline from the last Board meeting to now, the events that took place and the work that's gone on as a result of the redistricting report from ECR. Couple things we did, as we said we were going to do two weeks ago. We unpacked this with our stakeholders, particularly at College Wood, and I want to give Kathy Olson and her staff a kudo for all the efforts they did, taking a look at this and seeing what this does with, you know, the practical challenges of implementation. Also with that said, as ECR said in their report to us, they looked at the geographical proximity and the concerns that many people had of moving numerous times every two years. When we then pulled in the campus of Creekside and met with Tom Harmis and talked with him about some of the potential ramifications of repositioning or relocating some students and our classes on the Creekside campus, we talked about the challenges that that could present for Creekside, as well as West Clay. Because, you know, as our consultant said, they heard from stakeholders, they'd like to keep as much as they could on campus to see if this bubble would move through College Wood and rectify the situation as the capacity challenges that College Wood faced. So all those things happened. One of the themes that we heard was just a question on the College Wood demographic study that was done, and we did demographic study of the whole district last year, and just questions on the speed with which the housing was going in on the College Wood Attendance Center campus. So one thing we did since our last meeting is we asked the demographer if he would just take a look at that area and just review his work from a year ago. And he did that, and he did that as a just as reference as a part of his, without additional resources to the district, because he just continued that a continuation from last year, so that was something that we did since the last meeting. He gave the report back and we supplied you with some information from that report. To put a broad stroke on it, the housing that was going in, College Wood had gone in at a rate slightly higher than he anticipated a year ago with students older than anticipated. But when you talk to demographers, if they're, you know, plus or minus 1% to 3% of their target, it's accurate and that's, and he has been and he was, in a report that includes over 7,000 students in elementary, about 1%, right Roger? About 1% deviation?
Yes, this year, our total elementary enrollment was 70 students less out of over 7,000 as compared to what the projection was.
So, so to give the demog, his fair shake, he, that's pretty good calculation. The challenge, as we know, is where students locate. We can't locate them evenly by grade levels within a building, as all of us know here and experience, nor has it been a goal for us to balance them throughout the 11 buildings. It's not, that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to take a look, and the charge to ECR was give us a five-year picture at redistricting and allow us to make some decisions based off information that they've been given. So we took the demographer's update and sent it to ECR, which is consistent with the process we laid out going into this. And that kind of leads into the presentation this evening, because we hired a third party to take a look at the information and we gave them the new information as we received it, and hence we have a report this evening that gives everybody an update. But some of the pieces that we looked at before we get into the report with College Wood and Creekside, a difference from what we did years ago in moving some College Wood students to Creekside, that was a one-year fix to allow construction to be completed of another West Clay on that campus. As we look at the report that we received two weeks ago, that would have been more like a five-year fix with the challenges facing us. So we looked at some nuances there. And our charge is to continue to make sure that we have students in positions where they have equity of opportunity for programs, and we believe, as we sit here today, that exists. We commend College Wood for all their efforts, and the students are doing an excellent job with Mrs. Olson as their principal, and teachers are doing a wonderful job in the classroom and the parents supporting what we do. So we believe we have that as we sit here today. Now the challenge is have that going forward. So that leads into the PowerPoint that we have this evening, and I want to cue that up for just a second. ECR provided with us now an update based upon the numbers. Are we getting it? There we go. Okay. Again, ECR updated their report based on what was given to them by the demographer, and we'll toggle through that and give everyone an update this evening. Same process, just to reaffirm how they did this, engaging over 130 participants in our community, from all of us at the table here to the parents, students, support staff, and community leaders. This is the process, just to kind of remind all of us. Surveys will be coming at the end of the month, as we get those drafted, and I'll get those back in front of the Board, obviously, before they go out. Just to reaffirm the primary considerations that they heard, they being ECR, from the 130-plus stakeholders, challenges of overcapacity and geographic proximity is important, align the feeders to secondary, to elementary, long-term solution, and when we say long-term, we're looking at least a five-year solution, and then the traditions of grandfathering that we've done here for fifth and eighth, as well as the transition process that was complemented on by all stakeholders that Carmel Clay Schools has done so well in the past. Continue that. As stated two weeks ago, the recommendation, one, still holds, signing all students who attend Orchard Park Elementary to attend Carmel Middle. And just to reaffirm, those parent nights have been the same as in all three campuses, attended by all three principals, with a common message, common theme, and common information. And contingent on where we land with adoption, there'll be more transitions, so this can be an intimate connection for any students that may have not been able to attend, a transition opportunity to date. Second recommendation is assign all students who attend Mohawk Trails to attend Clay Middle. That's consistent with the feeder recommendation that they gave, that they listened to with the stakeholder considerations, and then the representative map that goes with Recommendation 1 and 2. Two weeks ago, which is now called Previous Recommendation 3, this was the if necessary assignment strategically, students at College Wood, two empty classrooms at West Clay and Creekside, and I, in my introduction, I delineated the challenges that we identified with that and some questions we had at the speed of the expansion of the College Wood attendance area. So with that said, this is ECR's response to the demographer's update that was given to them between last Board meeting and this one. Based upon the fact that College Wood is growing quicker than they thought and anticipated, and would be beyond overcrowded, the recommendation is to redistrict the 70 students currently attending College Wood Elementary, living in the area indicated by the yellow border, and we'll show you that map in a minute, to Smokey Row, which in many cases is closer proximity than College Wood. At the same time, redistrict the 38 students currently attending Creekside, living in the same area to Carmel Middle. As we stated, College Wood is overcapacity at 8:24. With the new report, it's going to be more students anticipated next year than we thought in the initial report that we received from our demographer, hence that changes ECR's recommendation, because this does not meet our charge to them to give us a five-year fix. It just would not do that. And it would decrease the number of students at College Wood by approximately 70. They're again recommending that we continue with the grandfathering of fifth-grade students, as well as eighth-grade students for College Wood and Creekside respectively. And this, this is the map that is referenced to the revised recommendation for 3, and it is proposed in yellow, and the next one is a little more, it's the same map but in a closer GPS view of it. And then this was in the report two weeks ago, when they said there's an additional recommendation, we'll call it 4 now they're calling it, that was about the 19 students in the three-apartment complexes in the Orchard Park Boundary area, currently going to Woodbrook and Creekside. They observed that, and it goes back to the point that it gets them into the feeders and neighborhoods as well. That was, that's not new, but it was in the last report two weeks ago. Let me back up a little bit. Let's hover on this for a minute. I'm going to bring Roger in to talk to some more about the numbers as we go along, but one of the things, in reference to the revised recommendation 3, obviously, we can do the math, we're going to reduce College Wood's 70 students, and then it's going to decline and wane after that, but some may be asking, is that going to be enough to allow for us to move forward with College Wood? We think it will be based upon the demographics and going forward, and just, it'll be clearly 50 below at least what they have this year there in the projections. The other challenge with this, ECR was charged with not giving a short-term fix, and they were charged with doing this in the most efficient way. If we start to unpeel this more, it's going to be significantly more redistricting, which we're not recommending, which we did not charge them with doing. And our goal has been not to even everybody out, like I said, to balance, but to make attendance centers that we can get students into, still have them opportunities like they have now, with a five-year fix and the least amount of disruption to our families. And I think ECR has taken that charge seriously and come up with the recommendation. We believe College Wood, based on the new numbers, will get back to its, I guess, comfortable capacities sooner than later with this recommendation. And again, not to try to give any misleading, they're, they're functioning fine now, but they do need the breath, because they can't continue to grow, and this allows them to take the 70 students off and get back into that, that kind of pattern that they, that they need. Shared this with Mrs. Olson. We believe this is a viable plan and consistent with the goals we set forth with ECR when they came to us. A couple other points of clarification, if I might move to the chart. In the previous presentation, there may have been some questions on the middle school capacities. The middle school capacities in the first report did not include the performance areas, is that right Roger?
Yes, and that information was not, had not yet been shared with the public, but it had been shared with the members of the School Board.
Right.
And so, when ECR first looked at the information that we gave them relative to the middle schools, they did not include, appropriately, they did not include a number of spaces, and we wouldn't either, such as the LGI labs and areas that are computer labs, something that's more or less spatial purpose where if you, if the students leave their classroom to go to the computer lab, we're not going to backfill their classroom with other students. So, so it's, you don't count that space. But they also initially did not include Performing Arts, which we, which is different than, than a computer lab, because those students, like in English class, they are scheduled into Performing Arts. And so, these are the, so we took these numbers, and then when we start with the process, the enrollment number, or the capacity numbers is actually higher than this. This is 80%, because we know that in a secondary school, you cannot really schedule 100% efficiency. Because if, if a teacher's on a prep period, for example, they may be at the clear far end of the building, and so that room could be available for a class, but as a practical matter, you can't, you know, get students from one end of the building and the other. So, so it's very typical in arriving at capacity to use about an 80% efficiency rating, and that's what these numbers represent.
Another thing we did talk to the demographer about, because you may be asking, wasn't that development at College Wood, the new developments, housings going in, last year visible to the demographer? Yes, they were. As, as stated, they came in faster with students at a higher elementary level than anticipated. He did look at all the other new developments in the district. No other attendance area or development is ahead of where it was anticipated to be, like College Wood was. Prairie Trace and Town Metal, for example, with new developments going in, are not exceeding their anticipated growth as the demographer laid out, even though they, as we all can tell, they have additional new houses going in. So, if you're asking, why didn't we look at, we did look at that, he did look at that. The only one that is developing quicker with more students would be the attendance areas where there's new houses going in at College Wood. So that was looked at as well. So just to kind of put a little bit of a summary, that would mean that, based upon this recommendation, College Wood, West Clay, Town Metal would attend Creekside, Archer Park, Smokey Row, Carmel Elementary and Cherry Tree to Carmel Middle, Forestale, Woodbrook, Prairie Trace, and Mohawk Trails to Clay, just to kind of get a little clarity to that. But based upon, you know, where we were two weeks ago, I think we had some prudent questions. Engaged and talked to stakeholders that had questions, they had good questions as well. We do feel more comfortable about some of the numbers we're looking at, as we, you know, did a belt and suspender on the College Wood attendance area, and what the demographer is reporting back is, is understandable and tangible. We also asked ECR to take a look, some of the things we talked about on the front end about the social-emotional impact as we look at redistricting, and they had, they had done that on the front end of the report, and I just asked them to just include this in their addendum, as we look at their suggestion to make Mohawk Trails feeding into one middle school, and then just cite some best practice regarding our peer groups and some of the transitions we do. And they included that as well, which I think is appropriate, as we try and do our level best with the situation, and make it as stable as possible with some moving parts. So, in conclusion, this takes it, their recommendation, to 4% of our students. Again, as they summarize, address current and projected overcapacities, consider geographic proximity, minimize the effect of redistricting on an educational and social-emotional level, align feeder patterns from elementary to middle, and allow grandfathering of fifth and eighth for next year, as we have done in the past, when we've had to consider redistricting and our attendance areas. So, I know that's a lot of information, but I hope that we had a thoughtful process in going forward. So entertain any thoughts or questions, and then, based on that, give a suggested timeline.
Questions. Pam?
Yeah, I asked this question earlier, but I'm, would like to know again, the legacy development.
Yes.
I know it's going up adjacent to Prairie Trace. There's also an area going up on 146th Street north of it, and I want to know how much of the land in between that and what's adjacent to Prairie Trace is going to be developed.
Okay. You want to touch on that one, Roger?
I think I understand your question. I think the short answer is all of it. I mean, the parcel is from 146 to the north.
Uh huh.
Down, down to the school. And as you know...
Is that all houses?
I don't, I can't quote to you the, the...
I know the apartments are already in there.
No, I mean, as you know, there's, there's a gas station on the corner that's about to open.
Yes.
There's a church, that's probably 90% complete. So, there are, there's retail and other businesses along 146, and then south of that, you start getting into the apartments, which were built first. And then much closer to the school and River Road, we're now seeing, you know, a single, or single houses, residential homes being developed. But that is a perfect example of, of when we see property that's being developed and houses and, and even counting kids and so forth. That, that development, for example, last year generated 41 K to 5 students.
Mm-hmm.
This year, 57 students. And so, but the enrollment at Prairie Trace was completely flat. In fact, about 12 or 13 students less than what the demographer projected. So, in spite, so everybody can see, out there, they can see that, those houses going up and, and would anticipate that, you know, there's going to be more students at the school. There are going to be students coming out of that addition. But what's not as obvious is the outward migration. And so, there's a perfect example where you've got a pretty large development right next to the school.
Mm-hmm.
But that school's, didn't grow at all. And so, and I believe, as with most of the schools, over the long term, it's, it's projected to decline a bit, in spite of the fact that there's still some development around, around the school.
Well, according to the chart, it's supposed to be going up next year.
Right.
So I was just wondering what it, did the demographer have a projection for the total number of students that it would eventually generate?
I would say yes.
No, I don't mean at Prairie Trace, I mean, in the school.
I'm sorry?
You're saying by 2019, 2019?
Yeah, those are the demographer's numbers.
Okay. So it'll grow, but some of the other areas around it will decline, probably?
Well, I live on that, in that area and within the Prairie Trace District, and I think my neighborhood is a perfect example. It's about, it's probably 12 to 15 years old, and just up and down, my neighbors just behind me, for example, have two daughters. They're now both in college. Well, one of them's out of college last year, and the other one's, I believe, a junior or senior. So, there's a house that did have two children at one time at Prairie Trace, but now the parents are still there, no kids.
Yeah.
And that's, what, what happens is, is the community, when it starts, you typically, in that type of housing, get families that have younger children. But obviously, the children, you know, go through school, and at least initially, the parents don't immediately sell the house and a new family move in. So there's a period of time where you've got homes that previously had school-aged children, but, but now they don't, and that's what the demographer is...
Yeah, mine's one of them.
Yeah, well, yeah, so that's, and that's what the demographer has told me, is that when he's looking at all this, that's one of the factors that he's looking at is, is the aging. So he, he noted, College Wood, for example, he said to me that if you want to see what's going to happen with College Wood, just look at what happened to Smokey Row. Because Smokey Row opened in 93, and College Wood, I believe, opened in 2004, or thereabouts. And so now, there's not much of any development right around Smokey Row, or at least those neighborhoods are older, thus, what I, the example that I gave. And so, so he's showing a much, more of a decline at Smokey Row than he is College Wood, earlier at least.
And he, you know, he does take that into account.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Mrs. Freed?
It's not really a question, just a, just a comment. I'm really glad that we took a look at the data again and got the numbers. The best thing I like about the new chart is that as you look at capacity and you look down the road, all the schools are operating under capacity. College Wood's still like a little bit over in 2019. And I don't think anyone can predict the future, so if, you know, building goes haywire, I guess we wouldn't make it five years, but we certainly have a real good shot with these numbers.
And I would recommend, based upon, you know, we keep an eye on this annually, obviously, but we should update these, our goal is to get a five-year, update all this information again, in two to three years in anticipation of what the next phase may bring for Carmel Clay Schools. So you're always doing the best planning you can do, based upon, you know, the variables that you have not a lot of control over at times.
Thank you. Yeah, I too want to thank you for the update and checking in the, I know the Board had several questions and other things came up that were being checked into. As you've hit on Nick, and I think it's important for our community to know that it, even though the presentation two weeks ago centered on recommendations having to do with middle school for the most part, that that's, that a lot of numbers were looked at and are continuing to look at. So, that it's not taken just as a section, but the whole process has been looked at, even if that doesn't always make the public presentation, but it makes our information we look at. So, I think that's brought up now, and you hit, you hit on that, and that's important. And then also, you know, if we want to redistrict every week, which is clear we do not, we can keep our numbers more even. But if we're really looking for long-term, and the priorities that we hit with the overcapacity and the geographic proximity, that there will be some normal natural waxes and wanes of enrollment, but like you said, to look at it as can, but is this a number that we feel we can give equitable programming? And, and that's, that's what's important to keep in mind. So, so I thank you for that. And then I really just have one question that has actually been brought up in the past. The building capacities that have been listed differ and somewhat, sometimes pretty significantly from capacities that were used in the past. How were those, can you speak to that, I guess, and how, to those numbers?
I'll take a shot at that.
I'll take a shot at that. The capacities are arrived at by assuming 25 students in a regular classroom, or that's how these capacities were arrived at, 25 students in a regular classroom. And then, a special needs room, or a room that's being used for special needs, will vary, be less than that, but will vary depending on the class that's actually there, and the exceptionality of the students. So that, you'll see, as you know, we have four schools that are basically built off the same floor, they are built off the same floor plan, with slight modifications, but in College Wood is one of them. But the programming in the building, then, drives the capacity every bit as much as the number of spaces. Now, over the years, years ago, when we had the primetime program in the primary grades, and we had 18 kids in a first grade class, same school would have much lower capacity. And if we changed the 25 to 26, or 27, you can see how that, that will change the capacity. So, whatever number's assumed as to how many, how many children are in the room, is a major factor in arriving at the capacity, which is why it's not an exact science, because we know we don't have exactly 25 kids in every classroom, some more, some less. Which is also why, on any given year, you could have the same enrollment, and one year you would use one more classroom if you had it, or two, or the other way around, depending on, because it starts with, you know, what's the, what's the number of students per grade level? And so, if it's 88, and you start dividing that by two or three, you know, you get a number that, or if the school may have, say they have 74 kids or something, or 72, when you divide, if you add a teacher, then the class size becomes the lowest class size in the school district. And if you don't add the teacher, it may be the largest class, average class size in the district. So, so, so that capacity, actual capacity will change based on those, all those factors.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank you very much for looking back at all the material, and taking such a, I guess, a proactive approach after receiving the information, but before presenting this to us, having Kathy Olson, talking with everybody at College Wood, having the various groups come in, and really doing a comprehensive evaluation of what that recommendation was. So, we appreciate you updating all the information, and bringing us something that the board can digest before we move forward.
You're welcome. I would suggest, timeline-wise, so if, say, consistent to how we've done this process, and to be as thoughtful as we can on, March is our staffing month, that's when we take a look at staffing and schedules and all that. And I apologize for this, but my suggestion would be, we have a special meeting a week from today, with one agenda item, as we've been consistent with, you know, public presentation on this updated report. And then, it would allow the board to have thoughtful consideration for all these topics, and then come back the 23rd at our regular action meeting, and contingent on that feedback, we'd have an action item for redistricting. That would allow the proper amount of time and consideration, as we did for the first report.
Okay, would you anticipate we would have that open for public participation? I think the board would support having public participation at that meeting?
Yeah, I think that would be like, the only, that would be the agenda item.
Okay, to receive information, okay, just make sure.
I mean, I would suggest we just have school, you know, the redistricting follow-up, and then, a public presentation after, like we are this evening.
Okay.
To keep with the pattern of, you know, genuine openness.
Okay.
And I commend, I commend the board-
Are you asking for a vote?
No, the 23rd.
No.
No, that would keep us, our original timeline was to have the vote on the 23rd to begin with. It stays with that timeline.
Okay. But given that there's a nuance to the previous recommendation, we want to be sure to give everybody an opportunity to provide feedback.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that to the board, because that, you've been, you know, thoughtful about that to this point, if that works, I think that would be consistent with your approach.
Are you all checking your schedules?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's up to you.
That's President's Day?
Monday, President's Day.
Yeah.
I'm going to make that Tuesday. What's Tuesday look like?
Check, check Tuesday.
Check Tuesday.
Good point.
Well, I thank you, new board member. We appreciate that insight.
Yeah, that was unintentional. So, it'll be the 17th. Tuesday, the 17th. What time?
I think it should be the regular time, 7 o'clock.
It's up to you, that's fine.
I think the people that work in it would like to share with me.
So, 17th, 17th at 7:00 PM. And again, I'd suggest it'd be redistricting follow-up, then, public presentation, that'd be it on the agenda.
In this room?
Yep.
Because it's a special session, okay.
I'd put it right here.
Dana, do you have that information?
What?
Okay, we're going to be-
Yeah, I have all.
Okay, just making sure.
17th at 7.
Because you are our official scheduler.
And the time to allow this to take the proper course.
Give me one moment to update my calendar, too.
Okay. Is everybody ready to proceed? Fantastic. Okay, next on the agenda, oh, by the way, thank you very much, and we'll have our meeting next week to further unpack the redistricting. Next on the agenda is public participation. We have three individuals listed. Some had mentioned they may not need to chat, should the outcome of what was presented change. So, is any, you are welcome to participate, so if people would like to participate, I will call your name, and you choose if you want to or not. Public participation typically, you have two minutes to speak, you go to the podium, there's some indicators up there, green is go. When you have about 30 seconds left, the yellow light will pop on, and then the red light will illuminate when two minutes has expired. The first who we have on the list is Nikki McNally. So, please repeat your name and address for the records, and begin when you're ready.
Okay, it's Nikki McNally, 4429 Serengeti Circle, Carmel. Can I ask a question? Or is that, no, okay. So, I think if, going forward, this new option is what you're moving forward with, then most of our concerns from College Wood have been addressed, because most of the concerns were with logistics around getting kids from, you know, West Clay, or from College Wood to West Clay, or to Creekside, and just logistically, how we would make that work. So, I think this addresses that as a much more reasonable solution. So, I'll just say that, I think that this is a better way to go, from the parents that I've talked to at College Wood. Just a quick note, the way things are set up this year, because it looks like we'll still have a little bit overcapacity, I just, for on the record, the way the LGI is working as a classroom, I don't think is great. My son is in fifth grade in math there right now, and if that's part of the long-term solution, I think there's just way too many kids in that classroom, even though it's big, it's not a great setup, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Lee Altenberg.
Hi, everyone, I'm Lee Altenberg, address is 14254 Carlo Run. Most importantly, I'm a College Wood parent, and I have to first thank you for, I think, the transparency in the process, and the fact that you're adding another meeting, allowing the public to participate. I would imagine there would be lots of parents who see this new proposal, and might want to come and share some thoughts, so thank you for the transparency. To Nikki's point, I think relooking at the demographic, demographer study, and really taking a look at all those new neighborhoods coming in at College Wood area, I really appreciate you looking at it. I think, from the parents we've talked to, it just sanity check, didn't quite feel right. And so, having the confidence, parents knowing, hey, we've really looked at this, we have confidence in this new study, I think that makes parents feel a lot better. Now, that said, I think we all have total confidence in Mrs. Olson. She has shined above and beyond this year in making it work with so many students, and if we had the first option, honestly, she would make it work. Having fifth grade go to Creekside, we'd figure it out. The last piece is, I know we can't ask questions, but perhaps this is something you could address next week. So, specifically, how the neighborhoods that were chosen, we were taking pictures and looking at the maps, I think it's Saddle Creek and Westmont, but I couldn't totally tell. Specifically, how were those neighborhoods chosen? So, were you basically taking the demographer's study and trying to do building blocks to get to this 70-student number? I have a feeling, I'm not a Saddle Creek parent, but I have a feeling you'll probably hear from folks, so there's my time. So, I think maybe answering that question, and then also, seeing, what did Egra take into account? Was it just a numbers game, or how did they choose those two neighborhoods? I think that would probably be a question folks will have next week. Thank you.
Thank you. And third on our list, we have Emily Khan. Okay, well, thank you. And just a reminder that next week, on Tuesday evening at 7:00 PM, we will be talking about redistricting again, and that will be an opportunity for public participation. Moving right along, we have our workshop topic. I turn to Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to do an update on student growth and achievement. There's actually three parts to our workshop topic that we're going to talk about. I'm first going to give you an update on student growth, and then, I will give you an update on I-Step. I'm sure you've seen the news today, and you may want to find out some more about that. And then, we will look at a district measure that we participated in last year, which is OECD, and Mrs. Arroyo and Mrs. McDaniel are here to share some more information on that for us. So, as soon as I can get us-
Is it the phone in my-
No, mine is up here first.
Okay.
No, it's, I think you said it was five. Okay, great, thank you. So, as I said, we're first going to look at student growth, and one of the board goals last year, and continuing this year, is to make sure that we have a student growth model that really is comparing apples to apples. It's looking at, how are our students growing? Not using the state's student growth, because that compares one year's I-Step to another year's I-Step, and they look at a peer group. So, we really wanted to look at, where is that student now, and how has that student grown? So, the assessment that we chose was NWA, NWEA MAP and MPG, and we started to implement that this year in kindergarten through fifth grade. And this assessment, as I shared with you last year before we implemented this, this is a formative assessment, so this truly informs our instruction. It's what they title as an interim assessment, and the information that it gives us, it shows us what are our students ready to learn? What are, and it is a computer adaptive assessment, so it moves up and down based on how the students do on the assessment. And it, so it's based on the students' own knowledge, not based on a set of standards and proficiency towards that standard. We are finishing up our second assessment period in the winter, we will finish that up on Friday. We've had a three-week window, where our students were assessed in the fall, and then they're assessed again in the winter. We are looking at, and for our middle schools, to expand the NWEA MAP assessment for our sixth through eighth grade students. And as we looked at our whole middle school redesign, and looked at teaming, this really is a nice piece that will fit in, that will really help us to have that common data, especially as we're looking as our teams are meeting, and looking at student achievement, looking at where our students are ready to learn. And so, as they're working together, to make sure our students are learning the standards that they're responsible for learning, they'll have that common data as well, to really delve into, to look at individual students, and what are the needs of those individual students. So, that is something that we're looking at to bring on, and start to implement next year, in the 2015, 16 school year. To continue our growth model, looking at the high school, NWA does go through 12th grade, but as we looked at that, and as we looked at the increments of growth, it gets smaller and smaller, and there's not as, they still grow very much, a lot, but it's not data that is as useful in the high school than it is in our K through 8. And so, one of the pieces we looked at is college board. Currently, we have our students in 10th grade in the fall take PSAT, and the state actually pays for that in the fall, for all 10th graders in the state of Indiana. Our 11th graders, again, take PSAT to look at their growth, and so we have 10th grade to 11th grade, and we can look at that growth, and then they move into SAT, and our 11th and 12th grade students take SAT, and that does give us a nice growth projection, as we can look at that data over time. One of the things we're looking at adding, that we currently do not have, is adding the PSAT to ninth grade. And this is brand-new, that the college board is adding. In the past, college board had an assessment called Spring Board, and they're moving away from that, or I'm sorry, Ready Step. They're moving away from that assessment, and they're putting PSAT in the ninth grade. And it's interesting to note that our current seniors, this year, they actually were part of the norming for PSAT. Our current seniors took PSAT as ninth graders, and we participated in that pilot at Carmel High School, and it was part of, the reason they had the pilot was to develop the norms for ninth-grade PSATs. And so, we're looking to implement the PSAT in ninth grade, and then we will have that growth, looking at, on that same assessment, over ninth, 10th, 11th grade, and then moving into SAT for 11th and 12th grade. So, we felt like that would be a really good growth model, that we can use to have some very good data, that truly compares apples to apples, and doesn't compare two different assessments over time. So, thinking of our student growth model, that is the plan that we are looking at moving forward.
Amy, let me interject one thing, thank you very much. If you recall, as we talked about goal planning, my first fall here, and then again, second, this was one of the focus areas that we wanted to explore last year, and then start to do implementation. We did K-5, now we're looking at 6, 8, then 9, 12. I think this is a significant moment, because we are taking charge of how we look at growth. I think that's huge. Flip on the TV tonight, we want to have a thoughtful, measured growth process, that we can report, you know, publicly, and our parents can appreciate and understand, and teachers can see meaningful and applicable in real-time, administrators can look at pragmatically as they look at program evaluation. And last but far from least, our students, the very individuals taking these assessments, can start to understand their growth, and own them, as opposed to, every spring, they're exhausted, they know they're taking a test, do they own that test? I think they feel compelled to be ready, you know, prepared for that test, take that test, and then breathe a sigh of relief. We're owning the growth model, and I think that's, that's a very significant thing, and I really commend everybody for taking that step. Thank you, Amy, and your team.
I have one question. Does this change national merit semifinalists, because they, they're based on the PSAT?
No, it does not. They take that in the 11th grade year to qualify for that, and so it does not change that, they'll still continue to take PSAT in 11th grade as well.
Okay.
Okay, since we've asked a couple of questions, my question goes to those who took the PSATs in ninth grade. Have we tracked that cohort of students to see how they've progressed since now they would have taken it for three years?
I mean, we've, we've looked at that data, and we've looked at their progression, we've not, you know, made a lot of conclusions with that based on, because it was a norming year.
Okay.
But we do have that data, as we've looked at it over the three years, and we've, we've seen how they have grown.
Oh, good.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, moving forward, talking about a different assessment that is very much in the news. And this really looks at the student achievement and talking about I-Step Plus. Well, I-Step Plus is a very different type of an assessment than NWEA, where it is a criterion reference assessment. It's a summative assessment. It's looking at how are the students doing based on the grade level standards. And the I-Step has changed this year. It will be assessing the college and career readiness standards, and it also has technology-enhanced items. And the reason that the I-Step had to change is, as you'll recall, back in 2014, last spring, April of 2014, the state board adopted the new college and career-ready Indiana academic standards. The state asked the federal government in a waiver if they could take a year and not assess them that next year, assess the college and career readiness standards. They said, can we have some time to build that assessment? The federal government said, no, you need to have a fully functioning test that is assessing the college and career readiness standards. And so, what the state needed to do is they needed to develop a valid and reliable assessment that could be given this spring. And so, I'll talk about that in just a minute. So, some of the different pieces with the test is it is assessing the college and career readiness standards. We are in very good shape as far as teaching the college and career readiness standards, because we started back in 2010 when the state adopted the Common Core standards. We started implementing those immediately. Many, some other districts across Indiana said, oh, let's wait and see what happens. But in Carmel, we did start looking at our curriculum, revising our curriculum, making sure they were aligned to the Common Core standards. And then, when the college and career readiness standards for Indiana came on board, there were a lot of similarities. There were some differences, and we, but it was very easy for us to make sure we've implemented those into our instruction. So, our students have had the opportunity to learn based on those standards, which is a really positive thing for our students here in Carmel Clay School. But one, a couple of the pieces that are a little bit different is it does have what they call technology-enhanced items, where students, rather than just in the multiple-choice part, they may need to pick all the best possible answers. So, they may be picking two or three answers. There's different pieces where they need to drag and drop and construct an answer. There's pieces in the math assessment where they have what they call a number palette, and they need to create the equation. So, it does, it does have some different pieces, and we needed to make sure that our students were prepared for this. The state put out throughout the year, they put out a lot of instructional guidance and assessment guidance that our teachers have been using to prepare our students instructionally, to make sure they're ready for the formats of the new assessment, so that they're ready to take these assessments. And those assessments are getting ready to go online. But as you, I'm sure you saw in the news earlier today about 2:00, where the governor signed an executive order to really, to shorten the length of the test. And in this graphic here, you can see the hours of the test compared to last year as compared to this year. And some of you may be saying, well, that doesn't look exactly right from, you know, different things I've seen in the news media. This graphic includes the practice test time plus the operational time. Some of the things I saw out on the media this afternoon was just the operational time. So, you can see our times are a little, our times are longer, but this is the time that our students would be doing not only the practice, but the operational test. So, that's why our times look a little bit different. But it's comparing practice and operational from last year as well. But one of the reasons that the testing times are so much longer than previous years is, as you'll recall, the, you know, the federal government did say we needed to have a fully functioning assessment. In order to make a valid and reliable assessment, you need to have at least an 18-month period to develop that standardized assessment. Well, the state didn't have an 18-month period. And so, as they looked at different assessment, construction of different assessments, and they looked through two different experts as well, they looked at developing an operational field test. And that's what the assessment that's presented as it is right now to us, the length of time. It's an operational field test, because what it has on it is, not only does it have the actual assessment questions that the students will be scored upon, but it will, it also has other questions that may get thrown out based on how students do. It's similar to if, and Kathy and Pam will know, the Book Two questions. They didn't have any time to do any of the Book Two questions, so basically, everybody's doing Book Two questions. They're also building assessments for that, for next year, assessment questions, regardless of the vendor that they go to, because the state owns all of its own assessment questions for I-Step. So, that's why the length of time is so much longer to make that valid and reliable testing situation. So, I know, you know, the governor stated that they were going to use some experts to look at how they could reduce the amount of assessments. And I hope that they work very quickly on that, because one of the things is our practice window starts February 17th, which is next Tuesday, and the operational window starts February 25th, which is probably Wednesday.
And I'm sure there is many, there are many laypeople out there like myself, who I'm blown away at these numbers. And I, my question is, do we have any, any control over this as a district? And my second question is, this process that the state seems to be using, is this a tried-and-true research-based process? I, it just seems really an abstract way to test a third grader and a fourth grader in our students. It's just a lot.
Yes. It absolutely is a lot of testing time. But answering your second question first, an operational field test is a tried-and-true when you're looking at assessment validity and reliability and building a test. Now, is it best practice, like you're saying, for a third grader, a fourth grader, a fifth grader, even an eighth grader?
No.
It's not best practice. Some of the things, as the state has looked at the times before today, they looked at the practice test times where they said, we could go and use those as instructional. We got an email this morning, first thing this morning, we could use the practice test times as more instructional pieces. So, it wouldn't be in practice test mode when we do practice tests. It's just like the operational test. But they said that we could use that to, as a teaching tool. So, it'd still be preparing them. So, it still is in the middle of instructional time that you'd be using for other things other than preparing for this test, but it gives you a little bit more flexibility. A couple of the other pieces too, because this chart does not include I-Read 3, nor does this chart include the end-of-course assessment, Algebra 1, that many of our eighth graders and some of our seventh and sixth graders also take. The state did come out and say that students that are enrolled in Algebra 1 in middle school do not need to take the end-of-the-course assessment. And the reason for that is because that will no longer be their call, or their graduating exam. When they get into 10th grade, they'll take the 10th grade graduating exam, which will be new when these eighth graders get into 10th grade. So, we've opted not to have our, that will help a little bit. But I-Read is still another piece that's not even in these numbers, and that's an additional about two hours. It's about, there's a 30-minute practice test for I-Read, and then it's two more, it's about an hour and a half for third graders, as far as I-Read, which is not included in these numbers. So, we'll just have to, I mean, wait to see what the state board and the IDOE does in, you know, response to the governor's executive order to see how will they shorten it. I know one of the things in the press conference, he mentioned reducing social studies. Well, social studies is only 4th and 7th grade, and it's only two, one is a 30-minute session for the Part 1 Applied Skills, and the other one is about a 40-minute session for the online portion. So, that doesn't significantly reduce it for everyone. He mentioned taking out one of the reading assessments as well. I'm not sure if that, if that works as far as, because when you're thinking of the operational field test, will that work if you take out one whole section and then you have nothing to throw out? So, I, we'll have to wait to see what the response will be, and then we'll respond accordingly. But back to your first question, do we have any control over this? We have to make sure we administer I-Step to our students, and it, because it is the law, and as a district, we have to follow that law. And we have had some parents that have asked about opting out. And it does, there's not an opt-out for parents to say, you know, I don't want my child to participate in this. There is, you know, the law does not provide for an opt-out. And we have had some parents that have inquired about that. And so... Before we move on to a district measure of OECD, are there any other questions about this part?
Is the point of the practice just so they get used to the technology? Because do we need a practice for the test?
Well, the point of the practice is, not only that they get used to the technology, because they've also been working with, that is, experienced college and career readiness. They've been practicing that. But it's to make sure that they understand the format. But also, for the Part 1, that has changed significantly as well. For example, there are some differences where they read a passage. Before, they would read a passage, and they might answer some constructive response questions. Now, they read a passage, they answer some constructive response, and then they write a response using evidence from the text, which is very different than they've used in the past. Some of the differences in the math, they need to, like, for example, in the past, it might say P equals a number of parking spaces. Now, the students have to define the variable and solve the problem, which is different. There's also in the, another piece in the, on the online piece, where they have the tools, like they might have a protractor or a ruler or what have you, right there, and so, the student knew what to use. Now, those instruments are still available to them, but the student has to choose the correct tool to use. So, there are some differences, and so, the purpose of the practice is to make sure that those students don't get caught up in the formatting of it in those pieces. And, yes, that, yeah, Roger mentioned, to make sure the computers work. That's the purpose of the readiness test, which we will have a second. We already did one back in January. The state is having a second rendition this Thursday. Not to, that's not even included in any of this. Okay, great. And so, now, I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Arroyo and Mrs. McDaniel to talk about a district measure that our 15-year-olds, we had a sampling of 15-year-olds that took the OECD, and they're going to talk more about that and what that's all about and the information that it gives us.
Thank you. I'm Karen McDaniel, I'm one of the assistant principals at the high school.
You have to use the mic.
Thank you. I've not done this before. And one of the assistant principals at the high school, and I helped facilitate the OECD test for schools at Carmel High School about this time last year. There's a lot of acronyms, but I'll do my best to help you figure out what they stand for. And so, what was the, or what is the OECD test for schools? OECD stands for the Organization of Economic Cooperation and Development. It is an international term. The test, the OECD test for schools is the test that we administered to a random sampling of 15-year-olds at Carmel High School last February. And that, that test measures student performance in reading and math and in science, along with some survey questions regarding climate and culture, as well as motivation. And you've probably heard of PISA, which is the international benchmarking tool that the OECD test for schools is likened to or similar to, which is given to 15-year-old students in more than 70 countries. To kind of help bring this together, because there are a lot of acronyms that we're talking about, I'd like to show you some short video clips. There'll be two of them, that'll give you a little bit more detail or feedback as to what we're talking about.
If you read or listen to news reports about education, you've probably noticed periodic surges of interest in which country students do best in reading, or mathematics, or science, and where your country fits into the grand scheme of things. You've probably also heard or read the word PISA in connection with some of these reports. What is PISA? PISA is an acronym that stands for the Program for International Student Assessment. It's the brainchild of the OECD. And what's the OECD? It's another acronym that stands for the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. The OECD brings together 34 countries with the aim of developing better policies for better lives. In the late 1990s, countries that are members of the OECD came up with the idea to measure whether 15-year-olds around the world are well-prepared to participate in society. We chose 15-year-olds rather than 12- or 17-year-olds, because most 15-year-olds are about to complete their compulsory education. Experts in the field of education from around the world work together to create a two-hour test that focuses on core subjects like reading, mathematics, and science. Participating countries decided to administer this test every three years and to rotate the main focus of the test among the three core subjects. All very well, but testing students is nothing new. So, what's so special about PISA? PISA surveys are designed to find out whether students can use what they have learned in school and apply that knowledge to real-life situations and problems. PISA is less interested in knowing whether students can repeat, like parrots, what they have been taught in class. Rather, the survey is designed to find out whether, for example, students can use the reading skills they have learned at school to make sense of the information they find in a book, a newspaper, on a government forum, or in an instruction manual. But the point of PISA is not to tell each individual student how well he or she has mastered a set of skills. Instead, PISA results are analyzed and extrapolated to the national level. Picture one student sitting at a desk in a classroom somewhere, taking the PISA test. Now, zoom out as though you're on the space shuttle, and you can see the entire country in which that student is sitting. That's what PISA does with its test results. PISA shows countries where they stand in relation to other countries and just by themselves, in how effectively they educate their children. While PISA doesn't say this education policy or practice causes that effect, it shows what's possible and shows similarities and differences between education systems around the world. That helps governments rethink their own policies and design new ones to improve their students' performance in school. It also helps governments, educators, and parents track their country's progress towards a more successful education system. In fact, many countries now set national goals and benchmarks based on PISA's international results. PISA considers an education system successful not only if its students achieve high scores on the PISA surveys, but also if all students from all backgrounds perform well on the tests, not just those who come from wealthier, or more intellectual, or more culturally sophisticated families. For example, a relatively large percentage of disadvantaged students in places like Hong Kong, Shanghai, Korea, and Finland achieve some of the highest scores in PISA. Analysts then look at the PISA test results, along with the responses to questionnaires that are given to students and school principals, and try to determine the main characteristics of these successful education systems. Are teachers in these systems paid more? Are classes generally larger or smaller? Do individual schools get to decide what their teachers teach? Or is the curriculum determined by a central government authority? Once a profile of a successful system emerges, it can be used as a model for others. So, what's the test like?
I'll pause it there really quickly, and then we'll come back to that. Little cliffhanger there. So, let me talk a little bit about the OECD test for schools, just some facts that we have. There were over 285 high schools in the United States that participated in OECD in the 2013-2014 test cycle. On average, they try to get around 85 students randomly selected, the 15-year-old. So, when we talk about the results for Carmel Clay Schools, that's really what we're going to talk about, because truly, these students, for the most part, are just into their freshman year of high school. So, it's not necessarily a test about students at Carmel High School. It's about... It's about everything that they have learned and done up to this point. So, we've had the same, close to the same number of students participate, again, that 15-year-old randomly selected student. Again, the test consisted of about, on average, 47 questions in reading, science, and in math. And these, the test scores that you're going to see and have access to, and I think you have that electronically, were measured against scores obtained in 2009. So, this is kind of our participation. We had 73 students, 15-year-olds randomly selected to sample. We tested in February of 2014. It was fully funded, so the school corporation didn't have to pay for the test. It was administered fully funded through a grant from America Achieves. And we had this opportunity created through a partnership with America Achieves and the Central Indiana Educational Services Center. So, let me show you a little bit more now, if I can get to where I need to be.
For others. So, what's the test like? Here are a couple of problems that students had to solve. The first one was part of the reading assessment. Students were shown a graph and an accompanying text that read, "Figure 1 shows changing levels of Lake Chad in Saharan North Africa. Lake Chad disappeared completely in about 20,000 B.C. during the last Ice Age. In about 11,000 B.C., it reappeared. Today, its level is about the same as it was in A.D. 1,000." Students were asked, "Why has the author chosen to start the graph at this point?" This was considered a rather difficult question. In fact, across OECD countries, only 37% of students answered it correctly. Those students showed an ability not only to read, but to think about what they read and draw some conclusions from it. They figured out that the reason the graph starts at around 11,000 B.C. is because that's when Lake Chad reappeared after having disappeared completely during the Ice Age. The second problem was part of the mathematics assessment. It sets a scene. In a PISA restaurant, you can get a basic pizza with two toppings, cheese and tomato. You can also make up your own pizza with extra toppings. You can choose from four different extra toppings, olives, ham, mushrooms, and salami. Ross wants to order a pizza with two different extra toppings. Students are then asked, "How many different combinations can Ross choose from?" Now, this is a problem we can all relate to. To answer the question, students had to show their ability to make connections, in this case, juggling several foodstuffs and realizing that the choices are not, in fact, infinite, much as the students might like them to be. This was also a relatively tough problem for students to solve. Just 49% of students could calculate that only six different variations were possible. So, when we take individual student scores in PISA and the responses
Okay, we'll come back to that.
...to those questionnaires that we circulate with the test, and then zoom out to see a whole country.
I can find the cursor.
What kinds of things do we learn? Well, one thing we've learned is that girls
All right. So, sorry. Oh, another cliffhanger. So, as I mentioned earlier, you'll be able to have the overview, the results. I believe you have that in your folder. And you can take a look and follow along as you'd like. Some of the graphs are kind of difficult to see on the screen, but very clearly in your packet. So, I guess, you know, of course, you're wondering, "How did we do?" We did really well. Carmel Clay School students scored among the top 10% of the schools in the U.S. in all three of those academic areas, in reading, science, and in math. Students also reported a very positive student-teacher relationship based on those climate and culture questions. And we're going to talk a little bit more about the climate and culture questions, as well as motivation, when Ann participates here in a few minutes. But overall, I was really pleased with how Carmel Clay Schools did. And so, kind of to break down each of those areas, we're going to look in those, at those in a little bit more detail throughout the evening. But just to look overall at reading, math, and science, our mean performance in reading was 557, math is 574, and science was 561, significantly above the U.S. mean for reading, which was 500. Again, significantly above for math, which was 487, and again, above at 502 for science. So, when we talk about, and you'll see this in more detail, when we talk about what a "how" proficiency defined, there were basically six levels of questions, with the level five and six questions being the most difficult, where students had to bring prior knowledge and previous experience into play and basically be able to take what they've already known and then put that into maybe a problem, or to kind of take those unstated things that maybe weren't necessarily written there, and be able to take that to the next level, applying what they, kind of, those unstated situations. Now, levels one and two are a little bit more basic, just being able to define or pull out the information that they see in front of them. So, I kind of wanted to give you that range, so you'd understand what we talk about. We're talking about level five and six questions versus level two and one questions. So, when we take a look and we look at the breakdown per academic area, reading, math, and science, on how our students did. So, we look at the top levels, levels five and six, and how our students did in reading, and then intermediate levels is two, three, and four, and then that below, or that baseline level of one. For reading, 82% of our students answered questions within those two, three, and four, 15% at five and six. You can see the, how we did for math. We had a larger number of students be able to answer those level five and six questions. And in science, we solidly performed 90% within the two, three, and four. I'm going to break those down and let you see how we did in those areas, each of those areas, compared to the U.S., as well as, say, Shanghai, which is one of the schools that were tested the highest. So, let's look at reading compared, it's, the teacher in me wants to go over to the projector screen, but I'll stay where I am. So, when we look at reading, we compare the top levels, levels five and six questions, to how the students did in the U.S. versus Shanghai. You can see kind of where we are at 15%. It's very impressive. And again, our below base, below baseline level at 3%. Again, pretty impressive. So, for math, we look at the proficiency as well. We look at the top levels, 37% compared to 10 in the U.S. And then the below baseline at 3% compared to 23% for the U.S. And then, we'll finally look at science. Portion, this is not a difficult chart to read, it just takes a little bit of time to kind of absorb it all. This is a teacher-student relations and how our students reported, that they, how they generally feel about how they get along with their teachers, that if their teachers are interested in their well-being, that they have an interest in what the students have to say, if they need help, they'll receive it, and that their teachers treat them fairly. Our school, as I, we circled there, is the red rectangle, and that's what you'll look at. And you can see that our students said that a percentage of students who agree or strongly agree was very high. The difference is in those triangles and the colors, the why a couple of the triangles that are pointed down are green, is we were significantly different, or set ourselves really far apart from the lower, lower-performing schools. And so, you can see that those two that have those green triangles that are upside down show how far away we are from how our students felt like they were from schools that are the 10% of the lowest. And what Ann's going to walk us through next is the assessment scores in context, looking at each of the content areas. Thanks. Okay, so, we're going to take a little deeper look at each of our subject areas to get a better picture of what this really looks like. Karen has done a nice job giving us kind of a big-picture overview, but we're going to get it in a little more detail. We're going to start with each subject area, so we're going to look at reading, math, and science in isolation. We're going to look at how our students compare nationally, and then also, how did we compare internationally? And then, we'll finish up and wrap up tonight with some highlights from the report with Karen. So, let's talk first about reading. In the reading assessment, they actually had two types of assessments that they participated in, one being the Applied Knowledge and Competencies Assessment, and then they also had some survey questions. When we look at the survey questions, they actually discuss, students actually commented on their reading habits, which we'll look at in a moment. Okay, so, we have our reading proficiency levels. Again, that score of score one through six, the two being your baseline proficiency, five and six would be the highest level of proficiencies that you could achieve. We can see on this scale, our Carmel mean for reading was a 557, which is just at the lower end of the four range. So, as on average, our students are scoring well above just basic skill proficiency, on average, scoring at a level four. So, let's take a look at how we compare with the rest of the United States who participated in the OECD test for schools based on PISA. If we look at this graph, we'll see these in each of our subject areas. The green represents the rest of the United States, and then we are the red and white striped bars. And what's interesting, we are red and white striped here because we are statistically different from the rest of the United States, which is why we have that special coloring. So, if we look at our scores in reading and how the distribution between levels one and level six, 42% of our students scored a level, of level four, with 15% also scoring a level five. So, if we look at our range of level three, four, and five, we did impressively, impressively well, I think, if you look at those overview scores. An interesting piece that we were able to glean from this assessment is how our students perceive their reading habits. And this is an interesting profile chart. And you can see the columns, we have two columns, surface and deep. So, it ranks how students, their ability to, sorry, how well they apply their reading strategies as they read. So, their learning strategies as readers. So, they're either surface or deep. And then, we are either, they either rank themselves as highly restricted, narrow, or wide readers, meaning how, what do they read? Do they read for pleasure? Do they read fiction and nonfiction? If so, they would be wide readers. If they're just reading for school, we would consider them more restricted, especially if they're only reading one type of reading. So, ideally, we want students to be in the deep and wide, which is in the upper right-hand corner there. And here's how our students rank themselves in terms of their reading habits. You can see, our ideal situation would be our deep and wide at the upper right-hand corner there. 19% of our students rated themselves as deep and wide readers, whereas 64% rated themselves as deep and highly restricted readers, meaning they're excellent readers, they know how to read and what to do when they come across complex text. They just don't read a lot outside of probably what they're given in the school day. Okay? If we look at that and compare it to the rest of the United States, the good news is, we don't have very many surface and wide reader, or surface readers. Most of our students are in that deep category. It's just a matter of how restricted they feel that they are as readers at this point. This is an interesting graph that was provided to us by OECD, and that's how we compare to U.S. private schools. If you look at our school, which is the red, our district, I should say, which is the red rectangles or squares there in the first column, you, the first column within our school district is what our scores would be before accounting for our socioeconomic backgrounds of our students. The second column takes into account and removes the advantage our students would have from their socioeconomic background and kind of gives a more, what they would consider accurate score. So, if we compare our school to private schools in the United States in reading, we're very much on par with private schools when it comes to reading. And again, this is one assessment point. This is not something that, you know, we're looking at a small sample of students here and just getting, gleaning some information. Then, we're going to look at our schools, our reading compared with PISA countries. So, at the very top, we can see the distribution of levels one through six for our school. And then, below, you can see where we rank internationally. So, the powerhouse country would be Shanghai, China. But we also have Korea, Finland, United States, Poland, Singapore, all in there. So, you can kind of get a good idea of how our score distribution compares with other countries. So, our mean performance is 557, Shanghai was 556. Okay, so, now, let's take a look at math. Again, we have an Applied Knowledge and Competencies Assessment. And then, we also have three survey questions for this assessment. We look at the climate in math, motivation, and self-efficacy of students. Here, again, looking at our Carmel mean in the context of the proficiency scale, our mean is a 574, which is at the upper range of level four, almost moving into level five, which starts at 607. And here we are compared with the rest of the United States, again, statistically different from the rest of the United States, as indicated by the red and white stripes. Really exciting results for math for Carmel Clay Schools, when we look at the number of students even at a level six, at 14%. Here we are compared to U.S. private schools. Again, if we compare ourselves with the United States, we're significantly above the rest of the United States. Looking at private schools, even after we account for our socioeconomic backgrounds, we are still performing high above what a private school experience would be. These are interesting charts to read, lots of nice information. Here, we're talking about math climate. So, again, we are the red rectangle there, and the way to interpret these, at the very bottom, it says, "The percent of students reporting that the phenomena occur never or hardly ever, or in some lessons." So, this is basically what's math class like, how do kids behave in math? So, if we look at the fourth statement, "Students cannot work well." Almost 100% of our students said this rarely or never happens in our classrooms. So, in terms of the climate of our schools in math classes, very strong, and students perceive our climate to be excellent. When we look at math motivation, in this graph, it's the percent of students who agree or strongly agree with the statement. So, again, we're the red rectangle. If it's green, we're statistically different than the United States. Here, we're very much in line with what the rest of the United States, how students responded in the rest of the United States. If we look, let's say, at the very first one, "Making an effort in math is worth it because it will help me in the work that I want to do later," over 80% of our students agree with the statement. So, overall, positive. And then, finally, we look at math self-efficacy. This is the percentage of students who feel either confident or very confident about being able to do a specific task. So, again, our students feel very good about the kind of work that they're able to do. With most students in the certain types of problems, so, for example, solving an equation like 3X plus 15 equals 17, again, almost 100% of our students felt very confident that they would be able to perform that task. And here we are compared to PISA countries. What I think is really exciting is when we look at, again, the number of students in our district who scored a six, or a five, or a six, compared with other countries. If you take a look at Finland, for example, or Korea, we're really showing really great growth in math internationally. Finally, we're going to take a look at science. Again, we have the Applied Knowledge and Competencies Assessment. And then, our survey questions for the science assessment include motivation and self-efficacy. So, here we have, our Carmel mean is 561, which is right on the lower end of level four in our proficiency levels. If we look at how our students compare to the rest of the United States, we have a great number of students performing at a level four, at 48%, 8% at a level five. We also have 32% performing at a level three, so very strong standing even in sciences. Again, compared to public schools and private schools, we're outperforming both the public and private schools in this assessment. This is where we found some interesting results. When we looked at motivation, we are the, again, red rectangle, okay? And the diamond is the rest of the United States. If it is green, we are statistically different than, the green diamond would indicate that we are statistically different than the rest of the United States. So, a couple interesting things in this. This is the percentage of students who agree or strongly agree with the statement. If we look at second from the bottom, students say, "I will learn many things in my school science subjects that will help me get a great, or help me get a job." So, less than, looks like about 50% of our students agreed or strongly agreed with this statement. Or, for example, if we look at the very first statement, "I study school science because I know it's useful to me." We had about 70% of our students agree or strongly agree with that statement, which is different than what the students throughout, the average student in the United States would have said. So, just some interesting food for thought for our science programming. And here we have self-efficacy. Again, this is the percentage of students who believe they can perform a task easily or with a bit of effort. So, for the most part, our students feel very confident about their ability to perform in science. And here we are compared to PISA countries. I think I think, important to note, we had really strong scores when we looked at math in that level six. Here, we didn't have any level six students for science. But if you look at Shanghai, Korea, Finland, Canada, there weren't, wasn't a very strong showing of level six throughout the world. So just good to kind of give yourself some perspective of how our science scores compared with other science scores internationally. What I think is really exciting, when I look at the number of level four, which is green, we start at, forty percent and higher start at level four, which is actually better than many of the countries that are listed here on this chart. So then Carmel, Karen is going to finish up with some highlights.
Thank you. I had to, to look at Mrs. Freed and give her some props because I know as a former math teacher, and probably still current math teacher, I haven't kept up with you lately. She was, she was giving us the yay for those, for how we did in math, so I agree. So overall, some of the highlights, when looking at Carmel Clay schools and how we performed, again, we perform at the level that's reasonably expected with schools that are similar to us in all three of those areas. The disciplinary climate in English and math is similar to the average for the highest ten percent of performing schools in the U.S. And the teacher-student relations are less positive than the average for the ten percent of the highest performing in reading for the U.S. based on PISA. Couple other highlights. For Carmel Clay School students, their instrumental motivation in math and science, in other words, how useful students believe the study of math and science to be, is similar to the average in the U.S. Confidence in their ability successfully deal with math-related tasks is higher than average for the U.S. for math-related tasks. And students' confidence in their ability to successfully deal with science-related tasks is similar to the average of the U.S. as well. So those are just some of the key takeaways we wanted to cover tonight, just to give you an idea of what that OECD test for schools look like for Carmel Clay schools. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to highlight again, this is something we talked about last year, too. Do we have an international benchmark? And this was presented, and our fifth grade students represented, sampled, took this. But this is a district report, a district indicator. We've had leadership discussions on this. My recommendation would be we do this about every three years, as they do with PISA. This is a very good indicator of how we're doing when compared with other high schools in the United States. And I really appreciate how they take away the socioeconomic standard piece and look at it with private and public schools in the U.S., as well as the international benchmark. Karen and Ann, thank you very much for your work on this. And I believe we have some strong takeaways from this. And we should definitely continue to do what we do in math, and that there's a long story behind mathematics and the evolution of that curriculum. And this shows the benefits therein. And I think we've learned some things that we can do with our science programs going forward, and that kind of affirms some of the things we've actually talked about in the middle school program evaluation on, can we get more STEM education? Can we look at things like Project Lead the Way and all those things? So it's pretty affirming, to be honest with you, and very validating. And a big applause to all the teachers and students and families out there. This is a very, very positive report for Carmel Clay schools. Amy, I don't know if you want to interject anything?
No. I mean, and it's just, as Dr. Wall said, taking this information, knowing that it's a sample of our students district-wide, and then what do we need to move forward and learn from this to really look at our programming overall, K through twelve? So we'll do that.
And Karen and Ann presented this to the leadership team and engaged us in a little work on this. As you look at the different, you know, levels, because in knee-jerk, if you just look at the six and the five and the four and the three, what does that mean? The descriptors are very impressive for our kids to be performing at that level. I mean, even if you look at two, the basic rote skill and is, would be deemed proficient. But as you can see, we're way ahead of that curve. So any thoughts or questions from the board?
We do, but my, I'm going to ask the first question. The random students, how were they selected?
We tried to get a pool of eighty-five students. As you can see from the data, we had seventy-three students. But we submitted to OECD, we submitted all of our fifteen-year-olds. And then they randomly selected them, and then we sent home permission forms. And so some of the students that were selected, their parents opted out not to have them participate. So that's why we had our pool of seventy-three.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Freed.
This was a minister to freshmen? So, yeah, here's my takeaway, even though I'm a big high school fan, and I know the high school teachers do a great job, but no wonder Carmel High School does that well when they've been prepared so well in our elementaries and our middle schools, as freshmen, they can take this test and outperform some countries all over the world. So I'm, kudos to the elementary teachers and the middle school teachers because I've always said Carmel High School's successful because they build upon the foundation that is there below us, and so that's why we have to work on everybody. Thank you. Congratulations.
And that's why, thank you, that's why this is a district report right there. Thank you.
Ms. Nouse?
Yes, I was very impressed with all the overall scores and the way the students performed. I was a little concerned about the science, being at eight percent in the top. The bulk of our kids were right in the middle, ninety percent. So I would like to see a larger group of that in the middle move, of course, to the top. But that was a little bit of a concern of mine. And it would be neat to see some kids scoring in the sixes in reading and science eventually down the road. I think that would be a good idea. And the teacher-student relationships, it's a, it's a, or positive, or less, or, I can't, are less positive than the average for the top ten percent high-performing students. So that kind of concerned me as well. I didn't know what that meant by the teacher-student relationships are less positive. And I noticed there was one where it was talking about, my, my teachers don't really listen to what I have to say. That was one of the areas that concerned me as well.
They, one, that addresses the teacher-student relationships, they're less positive than the top ten percent highest performing schools, but not necessarily, it doesn't mean they're negative per se, but it's just, it's comparing, comparing them to the top ten percent of schools. And so to put it in context. And then the other thing Pam to address, you know, yes, obviously, looking at those sixes, and obviously, we want to see more kids in those six areas. One of the things, too, that we want, we are looking at, as Dr. Wall alluded to, as you look at that six, five, four, three, four, five, and six are very high level. And as you look at that six range, especially in the science, it's at a very high level that it gives us information to grow and to continue to look at more of those STEM areas and those pieces. But some of the things we're looking at, when you look at the five and the four, and you read the descriptors in your packet, you'll see they're at a very high level as
Mrs. Hackett? Down the line here. First of all, I want to say thank you to everyone because these visuals were very clear and easy to follow. And then even though there's a lot of them, it was easy to see where we stood and where we are comparatively and where we are for ourselves. So thank you. Thank you. Second, just to jump off a little bit what Pam said, the one thing I took note was the science, but, but, and I forgot the exact question, but it was almost that the student didn't see the, I had to be careful how you said, the relevancy. I mean, it wasn't horrible and negative, but, but to the world. And so I don't know if, that can be delved in a little bit as you work through it, is, you know, is, is this project-based, or is this ownership of my education, or, you know, what, how that really plays out as far as what we can work with there? And then third, and I was talking a little bit to Dr. Delly before the meeting, and Nick just hit this, too, as a recommendation to participate in the piece every three years. We've been talking for several years now on international benchmarks and not just comparing ourselves to Indiana. Are there any other options we have found out there? Or is this the best we've found to really hit these comparisons internationally and nationally?
This is the most well-regarded international benchmark that I'm aware of. And to your first reflection, we definitely see things to, takeaways for us to look at. And in the science area, that is kind of affirming because at all levels, we've heard, can we do more, especially in the middle school program evaluation, can we do more hands-on science-type things, which we think would get the students to see more meaning and relevance to what they're doing? So that will be very interesting to do this every three years, to look at what trends we are seeing. And the math clearly is an extremely strong area, as indicated by this measure. But this is the strong, this is the most valid and reliable international benchmark that I'm aware of.
This is, this is really exciting.
It really is. This is extremely impressive.
And just to piggyback on what Dr. Wall mentioned, some of the things that we've already started last year and this year and coming in future years, especially in science, in our middle schools, Ann's been working with a team of middle school teachers to really look at that project-based learning and that inquiry, and to have that very, that relevance, so that students see that relevance. And she's been working with a team last year, and she's continuing this year. And then also looking at the courses. For example, one of the courses that you approved is the Project Lead the Way biomedical series of courses, which is very hands-on, which is very relevant to future careers. And so we're continuing in all aspects to help with that, help our students to see that the science is very relevant to their future.
You know, since we're talking so much about science, it really makes me wonder, do students just not appreciate the scope of, I guess, just the scope of what science is? You know, working, having done the science fair for a number of years, I, you know, the younger students don't, I mean, they think, I don't know, to do a science fair project, they feel like they have to discover a planet, and that defines science. And, and that's really not quite it. It's, so maybe some of our students really don't appreciate just the scope that, you know, science just is in, I mean, when you think STEM, that is really all science and, you know, pardon? And math. Okay, yes, and math. But.
Yeah. And again, it could be, I don't know if it's the students' lack of appreciation or not, it could come down to the simple factor of time. Because our first level of mathematics in our program starts in kindergarten. And we have literacy, language arts blocks in elementary and mathematics, which we should, but it simply could be a function of time and how we use that time. And as I think all of us know up here, it is not a long day. And I commend the teachers and lift and praise them for what they do during that time, and echoing Kathy's points about, these are fifteen-year-old kids. But it doesn't, it does shed light on, and I think really tell us that this middle school program evaluation is going to be so valuable as we look at these programs that can be articulated six-twelve, and the power of that. And this is some revealing stuff, especially when you get into the attitudes of our students as it relates to relevance of mathematics, relevance of science. So, so I think some really good takeaways for us to continue to, you know, we're in a continuous improvement model. This really is part of that. Now we have an, we have an international benchmark, which is a very, very good thing to have.
Well, and the reason I was thinking along the lines, perhaps they just didn't appreciate the scope, is because they did very well, and the teachers all along, you know, from kindergarten through eighth grade have done, I mean, they do an extremely good job. And I applaud all those science teachers out there, science background myself. But they did very, very well. So why was there such a discrepancy over, you know, they excelled, yet they just don't see the relevance? Because, you know, sixty, seventy percent of them are going to go out in the real world, and they will have a science job. They just, anyway.
Okay, so I'm going to give you my idea. Sometimes I get these ideas and they're a little crazy, but I know, as a fifteen-year-old, you know, they've had their science in elementary school and middle school, but it's, they have such a general view of science. And it would be interesting to see how some of these same students would respond after they've had high school chemistry and then the second year of chemistry where they've had time to focus and actually develop their ideas. I think this might just be a reflection, I mean, we need to approve their program, but we also need to look at maturity of the students. I think your idea of time is really a big thing. They just haven't been exposed to it in a specific way, like mathematics.
Other comments from the board, questions? Okay, well, on behalf of the board, we applaud you for bringing such exciting information. And thank you very much for presenting. Moving right along, we have a board member report, we have the legislative update, and for that, we turn to Mrs. Hackett.
Thank you. Last fall, let's see if I'm on here, but last fall, our board discussed and then voted on our 2014, 15 legislative priorities for the Carmel Clay School District. So I'll be using this as a framework tonight for this report and then going forward for this report, because this is what we all discussed in public and put forward as our priorities this year. Our first priority states, recognizing that the state differentiates between school systems and the distribution of state funds, we ask that the funds available be allocated in an equitable and adequate manner. As legislative update, as you know, Governor Pence submitted his proposed budget a few weeks ago that was unfavorable to education, but specifically to K through twelve public school students. However, this is just the beginning of an entire legislative process. Right now, the House Ways and Means Committee is discussing the budget, they'll amend it, the same process will go through the Senate. Then about April, we'll all receive the updated state revenue forecast, and that's about the time it's in conference committee. So it's kind of a stay tuned kind of thing, how this develops. In the meantime, you need to know that Superintendent Wall here testified at the State House January 29th concerning the impact of the funding formula on Carmel Clay Schools specifically, and included our need to continually rely on referendum funding from our community just to maintain our current programs because our per pupil funding is so low. He reported back that others testified along the same lines. There was even a representative from ISTA, Indiana State Teachers Association, and most suggested an increase in the foundation level, which is the basis for that funding formula, because that would positively impact the most students in Indiana, and it would impact the kids here, too. So it's a win-win on both sides if we can get to that point. Our second legislative priority states, school systems should be afforded the flexibility to make decisions at the local level. The state should respect and preserve local control of public schools. Senate Bill 500, which is a deregulation bill aimed at streamlining old, unused, or duplicated statutes, as well as restoring some of the local control of public schools, was presented before the Senate Education Committee, amended, and then presented again. This is, Senate Bill 500 is sponsored by Senator Pete Miller and is backed by ISBA, Indiana State School Board Association. Unfortunately, right now, some of the amendments that were made add more regulations. So this, again, is a kind of keep-your-eye-on, on the ball. It could go back and forth, but that, again, is Senate Bill 500. Our sixth legislative priority states, because measuring student achievement is so important... Our sixth legislative priority states because measuring student achievement is so important, the state accountability model should be clear, definable, and accurate, and not present significant questions about its reliability and validity. The state should also work to limit time spent on testing thereby preserving instructional time. Okay. Dr. Dudley hit on a lot of this already, so I am not going to go over the tennis match that went on today. But I have to commend different board members for saying, just read this article, just got this update, just got this tweet, and pulled it all together so that we can present some of this, and then Dr. Dudley put it in a, in a, in a report here that was actually, she already had some of the information, as far as those times, just not the update on how others are receiving some of this information at the State House. So the good news there is that these times that our kids are spending on tests are catching the attention of some of our decision-makers at a state level. So that is really good. It also sounds like it's a political battle, too, so hopefully the child's put front and center on that. There's also a couple other bills I don't want to get too far into. There's House Bill 1486 that proposes to restore a peer-based student growth model, and again, Dr. Dudley hit on something like that. We look more towards a student growth model so that we can not compare peer group to peer group, but is each child growing at the rate and to the extent that is right for them each year? There's Senate Bill 566, which is sponsored by Senator Long. He wants to replace the I-Step Plus and I-Read with one best test, but the best test isn't defined. So in all, I think the takeaway here is that this testing issue is being looked at from a variety of different levels, and a solution hasn't been hit on yet, but at least it's caught the attention of several. Not really under that priority, but also of note is there's various plans out there and put forward to remove Superintendent of Public Instruction Glenda Ritz as the Chair of the State Board of Education, and those plans have taken on different formats. There's a variety of options out there. It looks like something will be moved forward, but what format that will take is really unclear at this point. That has also hit the paper. I do want to take a moment here to just remind you that if you're able to see the movie put forth, Rise Above the Mark, the backside of the agenda was called Action, and it gives you a, oh, a template to write a legislator, or you can, and it even has your representatives and senators on there and their addresses. And those papers are on that table, if you want those. What else is on the table is a list of our legislative priorities. You can get them there, or you can go to our main webpage under School Board, and then there's legislative priorities, there's there, too. So there's an electronic link there. But feel free to write any legislator you want. You can check out a committee like the Ways and Means or an Education Committee, or the one that represents you. But I will keep you posted with these reports at our meetings regularly, and this is the time of year where it goes pretty fast. On a related topic, Superintendent Wall and all the board members attended an effectiveness governance training, effective governance training last Tuesday that's put on by ISBA, and provided an orientation for new board members, as well as a great review for returning board members. Our own annual evaluation cycle calls for us to evaluate our own processes and effectiveness, and this training, along with the follow-up discussion we'll have, meets that need. In addition to this training, they tacked on some great information, and it was presented on a new grassroots initiative being orchestrated by ISBA. And in general, this will provide a framework for our school board's local legislative liaisons to have continual two-way contact with our ISBA leaders on important legislative issues, but also on our legislators' voting records. So we know exactly those who are representing us, how they really carry out what they say they want to do for our kids. This will take a little while to organize. So we, actually here at Carmel Clay Schools are ahead of the, ahead of the game, ahead of almost every other school district here. So at this point in time, and I've talked to Michael Adamson about this, we'll continue to do what we're doing. We'll continue to stay current on our legislation and write our legislators and keep up to date with that. This, and we'll do that during this session, the spring session. During that time, ISBA will be training their regional directors on this effort, and in June, ISBA will hold a one-day seminar for superintendents and board members on this initiative and on effective lobbying. And from that point on, regional directors and local board legislative liaisons will meet and identify important issues, develop talking points, and develop a calendar for meeting with legislators. So that actually might shift how we have done this in the past as far as our timing, so that's something to look out for, so that we are all on board with the rest of the districts in Indiana to put this forward, because that's really the key, that for any effective grassroots political campaign is really to involve the entire community. So that's why it's really important for us all to stay on the same page with each other and with the other school districts. And really, I ask if anybody has anything to add, because we were all at that training and on email today with...
Yeah. No, I think you summarized it very nicely. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
Nope. Very good.
Okay. Thank you, Tricia. I really appreciate that. Before we adjourn the meeting, I just want to quickly remind everybody that we will have a special session next Tuesday, 7:00 p.m. in this very same place, focused redistricting. And with that, thank you, everybody, for attending. Meeting is adjourned.